I would like to welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. We're going to introduce to you the candidates for council at large in the city of North Olmsted. I'm Janice Patterson and I'm the chapter chair for Westlake, North Olmsted. We're a chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. Our chapter, which is a two-city chapter, was organized in the mid-1950s. So we have arranged quite a few forums over these many years. The League is a nonpartisan organization. It's open to men as well as women. It works at all levels of government to inform members in the public about both candidates and issues. We never endorse candidates. We sometimes take a position on a ballot issue. We're pleased that you're here tonight so that you can hear directly from the people who'd like to serve the city of North Olmsted as our council members at large. Managing tonight's event will be our moderator, Joyce Schroth. Please join me in welcoming Joyce to the podium.
I love it when somebody says it's all yours. Just has that, you know, a little bit of power for me. Good evening and thank you so much for coming. This is going to be a wonderfully interesting opportunity for everyone to hear, not just from the candidates, three of the four candidates that are running for council at large here in the city of North Olmsted, but also there is a ballot issue that will be for Tri-C. And we will have a speaker to address that as well in just a moment. I wanted to, of course, thank Janice for the introduction as well as all of the League of Women Voters members that are here this evening. This just could not happen without them. Could I just ask them all to stand or wave or something? Yes, I see our timers in the front. You're just waving. Thank you. There is information at the table right outside the door. So if you have an interest in learning a little bit more about the League, please take some information with you or speak with some of the ladies and gentlemen here tonight who are wearing name tags. The Tri-C tax levy is both a renewal and an increase. And we are going to welcome to the podium at this time Kara Copeland. Kara is the community relations liaison from Tri-C. And you can recognize her because she's going to find her place where her name tag is. Thank you Kara. She is, she has obtained her bachelor's degree in communications and psychology from John Carroll University and her master's of social science administration from Case Western University. Before becoming a community relations liaison for Tri-C in 2017, Kara worked for Slavic Village Development, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Cleveland, and the Cleveland Foundation. She will speak on the 1.9 mil renewal and the .4 mil increase levy that will be on the November 5th ballot. Please welcome Kara.
Thank you. And thank you for the time that you're giving me this evening. So Tri-C began in 1963 and it's Ohio's first and oldest community college. And today we serve more than 50,000 credit students each year. And since 1963, more than 900,000 people have been served by Tri-C. And 85% of our graduates live and work in northeast Ohio and contribute to the economic growth of the region. So I'm here, as was mentioned this evening, to talk about issue three, which is on the November ballot. And this is an operating levy. And we are extremely grateful for the support the Cuyahoga County residents, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay. We're extremely grateful for the support the Cuyahoga County residents have provided and the levy support that has been provided since 1963. The operating levies provide 50% of our funding. And this levy in particular, which is on your ballot every 10 years, is responsible for 25% of our funding. So as was mentioned, the levy is a 1.9 mil renewal levy with a .4 mil increase. And you should know that we looked at the numbers and we decided on the renewal with an increase was better than a replacement issue because it would allow us to maintain our exemptions. So the homestead and the rollback exemptions will both be maintained with this and will make the levy more affordable for taxpayers. In fact, the cost with the increase results in essentially a dollar 14 per month per $100,000 home. So that's just about $14 annually for, per $100,000 home value. And a couple of the facts that I wanted to leave you with is that for every $1 of support to Tri-C, there is a $9.40 return in economic benefit to the community. And across the county, Tri-C turns, across the country, I'm sorry, across the country, Tri-C turns a spotlight on northeast Ohio as a top 10 military-friendly school at a 700 universities, schools that were ranked. And we're also only one of 124 American colleges and universities to earn the designation of being a voter-friendly campus. And finally, Tri-C ranks number one in Ohio and number six among all U.S. colleges in awarding associate's degrees in nursing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about Tri-C in general or about the levy.
How does the funding from the state of Ohio, has that affected your decision to have a levy? Has the funding from the state of Ohio increased or decreased or do you know?
That's a really good question. I will tell you that the reason for the modest increase is because we're looking at the future and we're looking at rising costs. And there was an intentional decision to keep Tri-C affordable. So Tri-C is the most affordable college in Ohio. And so the modest increase was really to keep it affordable to students and to be able to maintain the expenses. So it's not, you know, a fancy, this is an operating levy and we know that expenses increase over time. And so we're trying to provide the same affordable, high-quality education for our community that we have since 1963.
So the dollar a month, you mentioned $1.40 per month per $100,000 housing value. Is that an addition, like an increase from people?
That would be in addition, yes. So the total cost for a $100,000 home with that increase would be $145 a year.
This may not be an appropriate question for you since you're more speaking here about finance and the levy and stuff, but how does Tri-C students, when they matriculate, how often they want a four-year school to seek out a bachelor's degree?
So that's a great question. We do have, and we have kind of, we have a lot of students that are coming to us for transfer to four-year universities. And then we have students that are seeking non-credit. So kind of, some of them are in credential programs and then we, so we have a whole workforce wing. So the exact breakdown, I don't have in front of me, but I could certainly get that information to you.
Okay.
But I will tell you that at the Westshore Campus, so I work at the Westshore Campus, that we have, it's about, I believe, two-thirds of our students that are going into the, to transfer. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you Kara. We appreciate that information. And there is information regarding this levy renewal and the increase on the table right outside the room. So if you'd like more, something to take with you, please do so at the end of the meeting today. We're now ready to turn this portion of our forum to those members in the audience who are seeking election to be members at large for the city council of North Olmsted, city of North Olmsted. So we would invite them to come to the table, please. While they are doing that, let me just mention that this particular forum will be on the League of Women Voters Facebook, YouTube in about a week. So if you would like to see it again, if you have friends, neighbors, family that were unable to be here this evening, please let them know that there is media available to them. And we'd love to have them watch this particular forum. Couple important dates that are still out there. The 7th of October is the last day to register to vote or to change your name or address. And of course, November 5th. Polls are open from 6:30 in the morning to 7:30 at night. And we want to see everybody out there voting, please. So candidates, we decided to make it a little simple for you this evening. Wouldn't you just love that? Till the questions come, right? So we're going to do two minutes for everything. Two minutes for opening, two minutes to respond to a question, and two minutes for your closing comments. So we will begin this evening with Angela Williamson and ask for your opening comments, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me? My name is Angela Williamson. I am a current sitting council member. I'll give you a little bit of my background. I began my career in public service in 1994 in the City of Parma Law Department where I was the legislation coordinator. I stayed there for approximately five years before I was approached with an opportunity to join the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office where I served as the executive assistant to the prosecuting attorney. I was in that position from 1999 until 2015 when I was forced to resign because I had to make a choice between my council seat and my full-time job. I'm very passionate about what we do for the community. I serve with a number of great colleagues. I work with an outstanding administration. And we've done a lot of really great things since I've been on council in 2010. So I moved to North Olmsted in 2005 with my daughter. And I decided to call this home. I knew early on though, that I did want to get involved politically or in some way of volunteer service. So I did serve on boards and commissions. First was zoning appeals where I served for 2007. And then I served on planning and design for two years prior to becoming, prior to my appointment on city council in 2010. I'm getting the 15th second sign, so I will wrap it up there, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Williamson. And now we'd like to hear from Mr. Kearney.
Thank you. Excuse me. Hello, my name is Kevin Kearney. I've lived in North Olmsted for 29 years. I've been married to my wife for 30, my wife Margaret, for 32 years. She's a lifelong resident. I have a daughter Molly and two sons, Brian and Sean. I've been probably serving on city council since 2008. And it's a job I take seriously and enjoy. I believe that if you put the time in, the connections you make with your fellow residents makes the job enjoyable and rewarding. I've served on many committees during the 12 years I've been on council. And the one I'm proudest of is the finance committee. In my 12 years on council, I've either been a member of, a co-chair of, or a chairman of the finance committee. And in that time, there's been good and bad. In 2008, my first year on council, along with Mr. Mahoney, the recession, the great recession hit the United States and it hurt many small communities. And at North Olmsted, it was between a rock and a hard place. And we as city leaders had to make some tough and unpopular, uncomfortable positions. We had to reduce staff, we had to wage, freeze wages, and we had to tweak the healthcare to save money for the county, the city, to keep the city afloat and moving forward. But we wanted to be proactive rather than reactive to the situations that were coming at us full steam ahead. Since that time, life has gotten better. And in 2008, our operating deficit was over $800,000. As of 2018, our operating deficit is over, is $399,000. In 2008, our bond issued deficit was at 50, over $51 million. As of 2018, our bond deficit is closer to $21 million. I'm not sitting here tonight saying Kevin Kearney's responsible for all this, but I am saying with my council members and the administration, working for the community, we're doing a good job protecting our, being good stewards of our residents' taxes, which I think is our main job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. And now Mr. Dwayne Lempert, please.
Okay. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting an opportunity for candidates here tonight to communicate why we're running for council and to address questions from residents of North Olmsted related to election, position of council at large. The League of Women Voters is special to me in that my grandmother was a longtime member. And I was also fortunate enough to spend several years of my youth doing chores and receiving supportive mentorship from Lois Vanoff and her family. Lois was an exceptionally active member of the League of Women Voters, serving for 70 years. So I just wanted to recognize her for her support of this group and for mentoring of me. We connected because not only was she and I share, just as League of Women Voters do, a culture of civic participation, volunteerism, and knowledge. My civic involvement over the years includes participation in student government, officer in the military, and recently represented the city of North Olmsted for the past six years as a council member. I find civil service rewarding and challenging all-in-one. There are times where you receive the satisfaction of fully resolving a residence issue. And there are other where your problem is only partially addressed based on the constraints of resources, code, timing, or decisions that were made in the past. Decisions that were made in the past are a reason we have certain advantages and limitations today. Decisions we make today are not only evaluated today, but will be looked upon by the residents of tomorrow. I approach each issue with this thought in mind. How does it add value to our residents today as well as the city today? And just as important, what is the value and expense we may face in the future from those actions? I believe we have, I have an amiable demeanor when working with other council members and the administration. I do not hesitate to express my point of view, collaborate with others when I disagree with their position. And I believe that approach is beneficial to the residents of North Olmsted as well as fosters a constructive council that will ensure the legislation has been thought out and that recommendations for improvements can be discussed and implemented in the future. That's why I'm running for council and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lempert. The heart of a forum such as this is when there's an opportunity for the audience to ask questions. We do that with note cards and a pen that members of the League have. And if you would like to ask a question, please raise your hand. They'll be happy to give you a note card and a pen. And then raise your hand again when you have that question completed and they'll pick that up. They take it to a screening table and members of the League that are at the screening table make sure that there's no or little duplication and that there's clarity and certainly there is appropriateness as well. If you'd like to print, that would probably help me. Thank you. So we do have a fourth candidate as well, and that is Mr. Patrick Kelly. Mr. Kelly is unable to be with us this evening, but in keeping with the League of Women Voters policy, he has submitted a letter that he would like me to read, which I will do right now. Thank you. Hello, my name is Patrick Kelly and I'm running for North Olmsted Council at Large. I would like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters and those residents in the audience today for caring about the future of North Olmsted. The decisions made by our government have tremendous impact on our lives and making sure residents understand those decisions is very important. It is an honor to have the opportunity to share a little about myself and why I am running for city council. Unfortunately, prior to knowing about this forum, I made a family commitment that I could not break. I would have very much enjoyed speaking with you this evening. I have a long history in North Olmsted and care deeply about our city. I am 63 years old and have lived in North Olmsted for 40 of those years. My wife Laura and I raised our children here. Our grandchildren are now being raised in the city as well. I plan on spending the rest of my life here because North Olmsted for me is home and for my family. I want to make sure North Olmsted remains a quality community and will work to make the city even better. I am not a career politician. For my career, I served as a Westlake police officer and bomb squad technician. Now retired, I am a part-time bailiff in Rocky River Municipal Court. My wife Laura, also retired, served our community as an aide in the North Olmsted City School District. Community service, honesty, faith, and family are the values we instilled in our children. In my private time, I have served our community as well. I am currently the president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 25 for Western Cuyahoga County. I previously served on the North Olmsted Chapter Review Commission. I am actively involved with the retired Irish police and numerous charitable efforts throughout the year. I am running for North Olmsted City Council because we need qualified individuals to step up and serve our community. I believe that both my life experience and local safety services will be a valuable addition to our city council. Our city recently has become one of the highest taxed communities on the west side. We need to make sure that residents are getting quality services for their investment. A large part of that increase is due to necessary reinvestments that were made in our schools, but the fact remains that we must watch every dollar carefully. The decisions we make today will determine whether we thrive for the next generation or decline into neglect. The council and our city need to reprioritize its agenda towards fighting for our residents and keeping the city affordable. I will be a voice for all residents and ensure that North Olmsted spends its money wisely. My top priority is to keep North Olmsted affordable for seniors and working families while we maintain critical services, including safety, road maintenance, and waste removal. We must do what we can to support our citizens. In retirement, I believe I have a greater opportunity to give back to North Olmsted. Our council currently has no retirees or fixed income members. I believe this is a crucial voice, missing from not only the council, but from public debate on key matters that have been put forth by our city. A large percentage of the city of North Olmsted are folks that have lived in this community for a long time, raised our children here, and now want to stay here in retirement. The city needs to have a greater understanding of the needs of empty nesters. We support our schools, our community, and want to see the city thrive. However, we are largely on fixed incomes, face unique challenges of aging, and want to ensure that our city stays affordable with quality services. In conclusion, I believe that my career of public service and commitment to North Olmsted are unmatched and will be valuable additions to the council. As a longtime community member and retiree, I also uniquely understand what our senior community needs are and will fight for what's best for North Olmsted. I will be an advocate for all of North Olmsted to protect our residents and their tax dollars. Thank you again to the League and for those in attendance this evening. My name is Patrick Kelly and I am humbly asking for your vote to serve you on North Olmsted City Council. So Mr. Kelly was afforded 750 words, which is the policy of League of Women Voters, and that was 748. So now we are ready for questions and answers. What I will be doing with the questions, so that no one has to always be first or always be last, is that we'll just, I will mention your name and ask you to respond at that time. I will be asking the question one time, but if you would like me to repeat the question, please do so. The first question, and it is for Ms. Williamson. What part of the master plan is most important to you?
The part of the master plan that's important to me was the rec plan. I believe that we need to continue to work toward revitalizing the resources that we have. Our current rec facilities are a bit outdated. They definitely need repair. There's no question about that. A lot of the parts of the facility are not age-appropriate. We have a swimming area that our, that our, our seniors are unable to utilize the way they should. We have parks that are great, but we also could expand on what we have. So that would be my answer to that question.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mr. Kearney, same question.
Thank you. I also agree that the rec plan is vital to the city. Our rec center is a part of our infrastructure. And if we let it go and deteriorate and fall apart, then we're going to lose a rec center and we're going to lose part of our infrastructure, which is important to all residents, young and old, in North Olmsted. I also would like to see more of the town center that we've been trying to talk about and getting that more organized and get up and running. But things take time and things take money. But right now, my main objective is to work on the rec center and the parks, just try to make it better for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Lempert.
Yeah, in my opinion, with the zoning plan as part of the master plan was one of the most significant things that we had to look at. And part of that is because it inherently not only addresses the diversity in different areas of the city we have currently, but it sets parameters and changed what was really just a flat zoning that we had for years in order to make some strategic decisions in order to keep the cultural fabric and infrastructural fabric of certain parts of the city. And by doing that, I think it provides us more opportunity to reinvest or to recreate certain areas of the city that were zoned, retail versus other parts that, while everything was zoned the same on Laureen Road, provide a different opportunity that we could develop in a different way and also, you know, really differentiate parts of the city. So I think that's the most important part of the master plan. I think we've done some great steps in that way. I'd also like us to continue to try to streamline Laureen Road as it relates to curb cuts and things of that nature in order to manage the streets and roadway of traffic there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lempert. The next question will first go to Mr. Kearney. With the two rec center levies, North Olmsted would have become the highest property tax community on the west side. All of you voted for this increase, but it failed with voters. How much is too much with taxes? And what is your plan for the rec center now?
Well, it was actually one levy that we put on the board twice. It was the same thing, we went for twice. We reduced the levy the second time. The first vote, we lost by 30 some votes. The second time we ran, we had opposition out there campaigning against the rec center, which I believe is, was a mistake. And it failed and the residents spoke and we listened. We have to piecemeal the rec center as much as we can with the funds that we have available to us. And I think the rec center with a new high school in between 90 and 480, if you, North Olmsted would be a jewel to go to with a brand-new rec center, a brand-new high school. And I think we should take care of our rec center. I mean, not many people have ice rinks and rec centers to go to. And it's a nice facility and we can make it much nicer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lempert, same question.
Yeah, sure. So just for clarification, I did support the putting it on the ballot the first time. I asked several times about the timing of different components of it and whether it all needed to go at the same time. And I think the consensus was based on borrowing the money. Putting it all on one ballot made the most sense, even though we may implement it over time. When it came up a second time, again, I pushed to the best of my ability to reduce that amount by a fair amount, but I wouldn't say cut it in half where some residents were calling for that. And as part of that, as we continue through this, I think that we continue need to look at timing of when does money come off of our books? And what makes sense from a renovation versus a build new, new facility? So, you know, there's several components to that rec plan. There's parts of the rec center, there's parts of enhancement to the park. There were some other things in the original levy, which I was concerned about putting back for a second time after the voters had not passed it. But at the same time, I think all of us can fully agree that there's parts of our recreation that need improvement. There's a pool that doesn't serve disability and seniors. It's been there for a long time. It's been patched for a long time. And there's something that needs to be done about it. And just patching isn't always the best solution, even if it makes, it sounds, sounds good to not spend as much. So, so those are the things that we work at. I think we all collaborate very well, share our opinions on where we stand on that and make those known to the administration. make those known to the administration. And I would say that we are all, while supportive of that levy, have different levels of what we think are important, and I think that's a good thing on council. So we'll continue to do that, and the voters did not pass the initial proposal, and us as a council, along with the administration, are looking at the best way to go forward to achieve good recreation here in North Olmsted while managing the cost implications to its residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Limford. Same question, Ms. Williamson, please.
The rec plan initially, when it came forward to council, was quite an extensive plan. It was well thought out in all aspects. When the original proposal went on the ballot and it failed by such a minimal amount of votes, we did come back to the table and we talked about whether we should remove parts of it, if we should continue to go forward. I know that costs were all considered. In reorganizing the plan, it would be costly, but with such a minimal vote of, with the levy vote going down so low, we as administrators knew that what would we do with putting this forward? We owed it to our residents to put this back on the ballot. It's your choice whether or not this goes through, and who are we to decide whether or not to give you that choice? So I believe we all did the right thing in putting this issue back on the ballot. I know we received a lot of pushback on it, but legislatively, I think it was the right move. So going forward, we do need to figure out which parts of our rec plan are the most important and which ones we can accomplish in a good financial way, maybe reducing costs overall. But, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. The next question will be for Mr. Limford. What qualifies you to be council at-large?
First off, I've lived in every ward in this city. So I have seen it, obviously during different phases of my life, but I've lived throughout this city. And went away for a little bit to get a different perspective on the city, but overall, for thirty years, so years, I've lived in North Olmsted. I have a good pulse of what it's like for our youth. I have three young children now, so I'm just getting into the phase of what it's like to be a father with kids entering a city and its school system and facilities that are slightly different, but in all honesty, greatly improved from when I was a youth. And I think that's one good sign that the city is going in the right direction. I think our bond debt has dramatically decreased and been able to see that, so I understand it's been a burden on us as residents, but that's another sign that the city's moving in the right direction. And for me at-large, I believe I bring the perspective to be able to look at things holistically and not just for a specific subgroup of residents or a specific ward, but look at overall, where are we going as a city? What's our strategy? How have we done to move this city forward? What are some of the challenges we face? And what are the different things we can either implement or not implement based on the viability of what our residents can handle financially, socially, and infrastructurally with the, you know, housing, our housing stock the way it is? So that's why I feel I'm qualified to be a council at-large member. I've done it for six years. I haven't heard much of what new people running are proposing until just now in what probably would not have been a two-minute speech. But, you know, that's why I feel like I'm qualified, and I hope that I, the residents here feel the same way and that I get to reelect in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limford. Same question from Ms. Williamson, please.
Thank you. I'm very passionate about our community. Having worked with the law enforcement community for a number of years, I'm aware of the issues that we face every day. Right now, I think the opioid crisis is taking over our city. We have a number of overdoses every week, multiple, which is taking away from our police and fire resources. We need to do things to help our community be aware of these issues. I believe that I can be that person. I'm accessible. I enjoy working for our residents, and, you know, we go to any lengths to help people when we're called upon, and I'd like to keep that going. I'd like to continue to do all of the work that we've begun on city council. We've done a great job of checks and balances with our finances, watching costs on a lot of our projects, and being aware of what the needs of our citizens are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mr. Kearney, same question.
Thank you. My twelve years on council, I believe, shows that I am prepared and qualified to be a council member, and I also believe that your council should kind of mirror your community. I'm a blue-collar construction worker, have been since 1978, and I think it's good for members of council not to all be lawyers or doctors. And we have many educated, well-educated, and well-qualified people on council, and I think it's good to have a good mix because we agree and we bring different points to the table, and we listen to each other, and sometimes we agree with each other, but we always listen. And I believe that my experiences in life is a good quality to bring to the table for North Olmsted. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will first go to Ms. Williamson. Last week at a forum for school board candidates, thank you whoever wrote this, this is your second time to come back. Glad to see you or know that you're here. A candidate stated that one of his children observed children in a North Olmsted High School washroom freebasing. Is this an issue, i.e. teen drug use, in North Olmsted High School that a council candidate would like to address?
Not having the complete statistics on the drug issue in the high school, I can't tell you that North Olmsted City Council is aware of some of the issues that is going on with our youth. I proposed, and council successfully passed, a vaping ordinance which restricted the sale and possession of vaping products and accessories to children eighteen and under. We were one of the first communities to pass this ordinance. It then went throughout a number of northeast Ohio communities after that. The state recently passed similar legislation that now restricts the sale to people under twenty-one. North Olmsted City Council has updated theirs as well, but our ordinance has a component for a diversionary track, which the state law does not. So I believe that we as a council have, you know, our finger on the pulse, maybe not to the full advantage of what our school board members may see or hear from, but we do have a school resource officer who is present at the school, and I know that he is very active in watching over and being a voice for the kids. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mr. Kearney, same question.
I'm qualified as a council member, but I'm qualified as a resident that I care about the children and the epidemic we have with opioids and all that. I hadn't heard about freebasing before, but it's terrible, and I think that we should all be concerned, not just council members, and we should all pay attention to what's going on with the young people. And what can we do about it? I don't know. I know they put in some cameras in some, I don't want to put cameras in the bathrooms, but I know some jurisdictions have done that, some districts. So I guess we just got to take care of our kids and try to do our best with our kids at home and hope for the best. You know, and the drugs are out there, they're everywhere, not just kids, but adults are having problems. It's a bad crutch, and my thoughts are with all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Limford.
Yeah, I think Ms. Williamson answered that very well. As a council, we've ensured that we support school resource officers in collaboration with the school. You know, we've continued to try to address legislation around illegal drug use. We're making dangerous products, as we learn more about them, illegal. You know, drug use within youth has been a challenge for decades, and it's just a cycle of what's the new drug that they're doing. And, you know, we leverage our safety forces and collaborate with the school in order to understand what those threats are and work to act accordingly and with as much forethought as we can to reduce those risks.
Thank you, Mr. Limford. The next question will first go to Mr. Kearney. What was the water issue that the council voted against and the mayor was for? How did you vote and why?
I voted no on the issue, and the water was, the Cleveland Water Department wants to take control of all of our underground piping and also have restrictions on tax abatements in our community. And it was thrown at us kind of quickly, and I was, I'm not saying we won't do it in the future, but at the time that it was presented to us, I was against it, and I'm against it today. They want to have, you know, their fingers everywhere, which is good. I mean, they're going to fix the, if there's a water break, they have to fix it anyway. So if they own it, if we own it, they're responsible to fix the water main breaks. So there's pros and cons of both of the issue, but I voted against the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Limford.
This is where there's, you know, there's benefits of bringing new thought and new ideas into council, and then there's also the value of experience and people who've seen issues before. As the water legislation really has been something that was first proposed several years ago, and then based on the factors of that time, was kind of put on the shelf. A lot of that had to do with Westlake legislation with Cleveland Water, or not legislation, legal review or potential legal action. So that sat on the shelf, and I think, you know, I think as a council, we do a great job collaboratively to try to work out issues and understand the problems, the potential solutions that are there. We also rely on, you know, certain committees that spearhead that and work and collaborate with the administration in order to bring those ideas, bring that information, bring those questions through a process. And in this case, I don't think we ever got to the point where we all felt comfortable with what that solution needed to be, and I think we'll just continue to work as a council to do better at that. But at the time, we didn't feel like it made sense to move forward, similar to several years ago when they decided not to move forward. But, you know, it's a consistent issue that will continue to come up. The pipes aren't going to get any better, and I think it's just incumbent on us as a council to continue to learn more information about it and go forward and select the best approach to make sure that our water pipes are maintained, not only today, but over a future maintenance plan.
Thank you, Mr. Limford. Ms. Williamson.
Thank you. I, too, voted against this issue. I believe that at the time it was presented to us, there were way too many questions, and it just did not seem right to go forward. Now, it doesn't mean that, you know, we won't revisit this issue in the future. I'm sure it will be presented to us again, but I think that hopefully this second time around, if it does come that way, we'll have an opportunity to vet this thing a little bit better. I can say that for myself, there were way too many questions that still needed to be answered, and I was not comfortable in passing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. The next question will first go to Mr. Limford. What happened to the mayor's plan to make a mayor's court out of Old Town Hall, and what is council's role in the use of Old Town Hall? And then if you could comment on what should be done with it?
Yeah, so I mean, I think there still is a plan to implement offices there within Old Town Hall as far as holding of the court, and I think that's still up for discussion. You know, there, sometimes there's decisions that you need to make as a council to balance what's the most economically appropriate choice and what are things that are important to your city's fabric. And Old Town Hall is something that us as a council felt was important to maintain and keep within the fabric of our city. Therefore, we encourage to invest in that and bring it back to a functioning building and be able to expand areas that were really a tough spot to use that in some way that was the supportive of the overall infrastructure that we had. And so I think we're all glad that we were able to do something to keep something like Old Town Hall functioning and viable as part of our, you know, city's history and infrastructure as well.
Thank you, Mr. Limford. Same question, Ms. Williamson, please.
I'd like to mirror Mr. Limford's comments as well. Town Hall is part of our history, and to be able to utilize it in a way, especially with Mayor's Court. Our Mayor's Court has been very successful. It's been a convenience to not only our residents but those who have had matters that have come forward. But I believe that the Old Town Hall would have the space that the Mayor's Court would need. It's easily, more easily accessible than the second floor of City Hall. But, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mr. Kearney.
Thank you. I was in City Hall tonight, and they had Mayor's Court tonight. And right now, we're, you know, as stewards of our taxpayers' monies, right now, I think the second floor is working fine for the Mayor's Court. The flow of traffic is easily controlled between the first floor and upstairs, you have to come through the main door, and we wanted to make a courtroom out of that Old Town Hall, which is a nice building, which the R.C. staff plays there, it was used for the food courts, and it is a good building, but, you know, you don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction and do something because right now, I think, City Council Chambers is doing just fine in maintaining the Mayor's Court, which I think is also bringing good monies to City North Olmsted, Mayor's Court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. I'm sorry.
Can I have one comment?
Yes.
Okay. They say you can.
Thank you. I just think it's important for everyone to know, though, that our Mayor's Court is completely self-funded. The money that's brought in pays for all of the things that go along with the Mayor's Court, from salaries to equipment to police. So just understand that with Mayor's Court, if, when things happen, it's completely funding itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hold on to that microphone?
Oh, goodness.
Ms. Williamson, I'm going to combine two questions, and so if you'd like me to repeat those at any time, please let me know, candidates. As a council member, will you primarily be a representative of the community or of the city? And how many council meetings have you attended in 2019?
In 2019, I believe I may have missed two, one due to illness and one, I was on vacation with my daughter before she went back to college. Can you repeat the first part?
Yes. As a council member, will you primarily be a representative of the community or of the city?
I would say, this is a tough question because how do I answer this? I am a steward for our citizens. I like to make decisions that are in the best interest of the people that we represent. In that regard, I also think that it makes me a good representative of the city as well. So I think that question can have a twofold answer. But I'm in this, I came into this position because I like to serve, and this was the best way that I could give back to my community, is to be a part of city council where we can watch for checks and balances and we can oversee the budgetary issues and watch where the tax dollars go. You know, we are involved in so many wonderful things that better our community every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mr. Kearney, same question.
Thank you. I believe in twelve years, I've missed four meetings, and that was, two of them were because I had an operation. As far as the community in the city, we're one and the same. I mean, the resident sitting next to me is part of the city. I kind of think it's kind of a wishy-washy question. My apologies, but...
I didn't write it.
I mean, everybody that I look at in this room that lives in the city is part of the community, also part of the city. You know, they're paying taxes, they're living, they're getting our services, they're using our services, and we try to make them comfortable and happy with where they live, and we want them to stay here, we want them to remain happy in their... And we want them to stay here, we want them to remain happy in their community or their city, whichever you want to call it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Lindbergh.
Yeah, I think I've missed fewer meetings than, than certain people running have, have attended. So, yeah, I think it's probably a couple. But to your question about community versus being a steward of the city or the community...
Will you primarily be a representative of the community or of the city?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that, you know, you can, you can parse words, but essentially by supporting your community, by listening to your residents, by understanding the challenges and the wants of different residents, right? Some people are challenged, some people want more, some people are willing to pay more, other people are challenged to, to provide what they have today, right? So you have to listen to those ideas, you have to listen to those challenges, and you have to budget appropriately where you're making strong, smart decisions for the long-term future of the community, which therefore benefits the city as a whole. But also continue to move, move the community forward. And, and that makes improvement. That means paying down bond debt that we've had. That also means investing in recreation facilities that, you know, are maintained or potentially improved so that, you know, each generation of the community gets a better experience living within your city and that you can continue to find ways to foster that community. I think with Mr. Kelly's comments, I think he brought up a good point. You know, my vision of the city and the reason I ran originally is because I wanted to make sure that our city had, from a community perspective, the ability for residents to live in it through all phases of their lives, right? We weren't just catering to, to good schools and then people left to go to a different community because, you know, they didn't, we didn't have the facilities that they were looking for with their kids, right? So you have to balance that. You have to continue to invest in your schools, but you have to invest in your, your infrastructure. You have to invest in your recreation. You have to invest in your, you know, when I say recreation, senior recreation or, or singles or millennials or people who have graduated but want, want facilities, they want to be part of the community. And I think by doing that, you're, you're being a steward of your city. But really, I think all of us agree, you, you, you listen to your community and you do the best you can to, to balance those wants and those challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Lindbergh.
Sometimes so many of the comments that our candidates are making this evening are in ways reflective of the questions that come in. And so this could be one of them. And it first is...
First is going to go to Mr. Kearney. Do you consider retirees fixed income when designing budgets or requesting a tax increase?
September 1959, I was born, so I'm 60 years old. So yes, I do. I'm very close to retiring and I want to be comfortable. I want to live where I'm not to worry about day-to-day bills and needs and healthcare. So of course we, and I believe the ones that are in their 40s are also worried about, you worry about the senior citizens and you worry about the young. And if that answers your question, but we think about everybody that, I, we try to think about everybody when we're sitting at the D S that, you know, that we're, we're an older community in many ways, but there's also young people moving in and we got to take care of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindbergh, same question.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, first off, and this may sound controversial, but I think to a point, everybody has a budget, right? And they have a salary or they have a social security and they have to manage their budget appropriately and understand what that costs are and what, and manage their expenses based on that. And, and it gets challenging, obviously with healthcare the way it is, that it impacts seniors probably more than others, just due to that inflationary cost. But I think we look at that as a council. One thing that we just recently pushed for was around the water, wastewater billing that we implemented. And, and part of that was tailored towards the homestead exemption as well as just in general, a, a reduced rate for low usage, which, you know, could be anybody, but theoretically would be supportive of, of people on what some would consider a fixed income or, or someone who lives alone and, and doesn't use a lot of water. So, so that's just one example where we looked at, you know, how do we, how do we assist some of those that are more financially challenged than others within the city? And so yes, I would say we do consider all different types of people and residents within our city and how our decisions impact their, their wallet.
Thank you, Mr. Lindbergh. Ms. Williamson, same question.
Thank you.
I believe that we, as a council, have taken a fiscally responsible approach to many of the, the things that we've, we've had to look at and make decisions on. We don't spend money like as if it's unlimited resources. I mean, I think we are pretty frugal when we need to be. But if there are things that need to be, to be repaired, I mean, that's a necessity. But I don't think that anyone here would, would say that there's any, anything that we don't do. When we think of, when we, when we make decisions, we make decisions for our community and what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Mr. Lindbergh, I'd like you to answer this question first. There is a prevailing theory that new and/or improved facilities such as the rec center would increase property values. An opposing theory is that our community is overtaxed. What are your views on these two statements?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you could clearly see that our tax rate is one of the higher ones in, in the area. At the same token, we've also been trying to amend for, I don't want to call them sins of the past, but, you know, we, we basically have taken on a lot of bond debt back in the 80s and 90s that had increased a lot of the property taxes during that time. And I give a lot of credit to the administration and really the finance director for driving, you know, a plan of how do we reduce that over the years. You know, this rec center comes up all the time, just like, you know, new school facilities come up because people want to maintain, you know, a nice, a nice city, right? And it's something that attracts people and attracting people does raise property values, right? So, so it will likely raise property values as you get nicer facilities that make people want to move and compete for your, your home stock. At the same time, I think there's always challenges of what do you want to spend that, that money on or when do you want to take on debt? I myself have always been challenging of, of some of the improvements within Springdale. At the same time, when you go there and you attend an event and there's a nice pavilion, you know, it's, it's something that makes you proud of the facilities you have here in the city. So, you know, that's kind of a, a waffling answer, but, but the bottom line is, will it improve property values? Yes. Do you have to compare it to other things that our city wants to spend money on? Yes. And I think we do that very thoughtfully. I think that's why this rec center plan has been such a long time in the making is because we continually evaluate how much facilities do you need to meet the needs of your residents versus the impact that it's going to cause on, on bond debt and, and other property taxes. And, and that's why, you know, for one reason why I haven't been fully supportive of a full rec plan that has been made, but at the same time, I acknowledge there's things that need to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Lindbergh. Ms. Williamson, same question, please.
I do believe that a new rec center would increase our property values, just as the new school did as well. I know the school was targeted to, you know, a certain group of people, as is our rec center. But I think that any improvements that we make to the city would definitely be an advantage to us and increase our property values. I know with two of our bond issues coming off in, in the next couple of years, that, that'll help ease the burden of, of a tax increase. So I think we've all been, like I said before, we've been fiscally responsible with, with, with our expenditures. We've had great guidance from our finance director as well, which is why we are an A++ rated community. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Kearney.
Could you repeat it, please?
There is a prevailing theory that new and/or improved facilities such as the rec center would increase property values. An opposing theory is that our community is overtaxed. What are your views on these two statements?
In the next few years, our two bonds will be going away. Our fire station bond and our library bond will be off the books. So that's, I think it's $80 per hundred thousand dollar household, maybe per month, approximately. And that's going to be more, less home taxes. And also, I do believe that a new rec center will bring our value, values of our homes up. Because I mean, my parents had seven kids, we all went to Catholic schools and my mom was voting for school every one time. I go, Mom, what do you care? We go to Catholic schools. And she said, as the community goes, as the school goes, so the community goes. So I believe sometimes you gotta, I don't like paying taxes either, but sometimes you gotta, you gotta pay, pay the taxes to better your community. Because if you don't take care of the schools and my belief, your rec center, the housing market will drop a little bit. And that's my opinion. And I think that if we have a nice jewel of a, of rec center, or at least it puts some improvements into it with a new high school and a new middle school, I think it's going to be a great asset to the community. Thank you.
Can I say one last thing?
No.
Are you guys good?
Yeah.
Can I make one? So just to clarify too, we're not, we're not, you know, I don't think anybody here in council is supporting a new rec center. We have a rec center. There's opportunities to improve certain pieces that are falling apart. And the timing of that, I think, is the biggest discussion of when is the right time to do it and, and how far can you go in balancing those other needs and, and future planning the city? And that's again, why some of these things take time, because it's important to find a right balance. And I think we're all cognizant of that, that anytime you make a decision like this, you're, you're looking at both of those, both of those opposing forces, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindbergh. Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes.
Yes, thank you. As, as you asked in the question, would the rec center increase property values? I think it would. I mean, it would attract more of, more people to our community. We see our neighboring communities, they have these amazing facilities. North Olmsted's a little bit behind. We're still back in the 70s with our, with our current structure. But I think that making these improvements, even if they're piece by piece, any improvement is a good improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have you hold on to the microphone? So give you just a moment. While we have one more question about the rec center. Have you considered alternative funding for the rec center? Are there grants, et cetera, that you could consider? Ms. Williamson.
I don't believe that any grant funding was presented with this plan. Perhaps in the future, yes. There could be opportunities to find grant monies. I don't think any of us would be opposed to finding alternative funding, any, any funding at all, actually. But we've, we considered, I know in, in many of our discussions, we considered even taking our plan apart and going piece by piece with it, which I think is, is what we're doing now. Fixing the, the things that absolutely cannot go much longer. Safety has always been a priority with every member of council while also being money conscious. So I lost my train of thought, but I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Mr. Kearney, please.
I'm sorry, could you repeat it one more time?
Certainly. Have you considered alternative funding for the rec center? Are there grants, et cetera, that you could consider?
We have a director in City Hall, Mrs. Lieber, and she's very good at finding monies with, through grants and the like. And she's, that's part of her job is to look for those and she does, and she brings things to us. I have not heard anything about a grant so far, but I'm sure that she has it in her, in her scope and that's her job to find grants and to apply for them. And we apply for many grants and we apply for grants all the time, but we don't always get the, the grants. But to apply for them is half the battle. And the rest of the question? Oh, different, different ways to fund it.
Right, right.
Well, we have to fund it because we have to, like Mrs. Williamson said, some of the building needs help today. We can't wait for a levy, we can't wait for a tax increase. We have to just start piecemealing it and what we're trying, going to try to do is fix up what we can, when we can, with the money that's in the fund, in the general fund and go from there. And then later if down the road, if we, if there's maybe a levy, we can put on the ballot and that's, and the levies I believe are better than raising taxes because the, the residents vote for the levies, not us. And it's, you know, that gives them the power and that's, they're the ones paying the taxes as well, as well as we are. So as of right now, there are no levies in the plan whatsoever. And we're just going to piecemeal it and go, the worst part, worst pieces of building first are going to have to be taken care of by the general budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. The question for Mr. Lindbergh, have you considered alternative funding for the rec center? Are there grants, et cetera, that you could consider?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think when this was proposed by the administration, there was, you know, discussion of the best way to fund it. You know, the administration proposed through a bond levy as a package. We evaluated that package. I think there was a, a lot of questions on certain parts of that package, whether they were needed or not necessary. I think it's important to, to realize when something fails, it's that the first time it failed, what, 35 votes? And then the next time failed by, by a bit more. But, you know, you're not talking about an 80/20 failure of something like it's a terrible idea. I think everybody realizes their merit in doing it and, and to the question is, how do you fund it? And we've looked at, you know, bringing a whole bond levy. That was, while not universally opposed, it, it went down. So now we're looking, and, and we listen for feedback on that, right? Like why, why did it fail? And, and some people didn't vote for it because they just don't want their property taxes increased. You know, if we paid for it some other way, they'd be fine with it. They'd probably be even okay if it, it was exchanged for other parts of the budget. Other people failed because they felt the timing was bad. And, and some of us knowledgeable know, and as we communicate that there's bond debt coming off from other infrastructure improvements from the fire station and library. And that would free up some, you know, what people like to call replacement debt, right? Exchanging one infrastructure improvement from another. So, you know, we've looked at different options. You know, currently what we've gone path and what's been presented by the administration is an improvement to the ice rink. And we all agreed based on the priority that was critical to do based on safety concerns and just the overall use and, and revenue that comes from, from hockey. So we're, we, I believe we're moving forward with that. We haven't, you know, received back the, the proposals from the administration. But that's what we're moving forward with. And I think there's a proposal around some other improvements to, to park facilities that we're evaluating right now, once we adjudicate that. So have we looked at other funding? Yes. Have we been brought any grants? No.
Thank you.
Yes, I know. Thank you for your patience.
The next question probably grew out of the original question regarding Town Hall. And this one will go first to Mr. Kearney. What happens to the profits from the mayor's court? How much revenue does the mayor's court generate?
The mayor's court goes to the, the funding from the, the money we make at the mayor's court goes to the general fund. The general fund is what we all know is like your bu, home budget. And I, I can't remember what, what we make per year. We get a report every year, but the money, it's like the mayor says, it's low, you know, low hanging fruit. And, you know, the mayor's court isn't liked by some communities. So far, I've been a big fan of it because it brings money to the North Olmsted, which helps our residents as far as taxes go, keeping, and keeping our budget above board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindbergh, same question.
Yeah, so the mayor's, I think Mr. Kearney summed up basically how it's funded and, and where the revenue goes. And typically reinvest a majority of that back into support of the mayor's court and then additional, you know, part of that Town Hall renovation. We actually plan to leverage that mayor's court funding as part of that plan. So, you know, we do look at that as a, a benefit to the city. It's also a convenience to residents. We've heard more positive than negative as it relates to the residential experience related to that. Obviously, there's broader questions of, you know, taking certain parts of fees related to, to legal fines and, and, you know, keeping those at the city while there's other broader legal activities that go on at, at a county or state level. But, you know, that's government, right? I mean, people keep, the state keeps certain amount of funding and keeps it at certain levels or they allocate it to different communities based on their things. So our residents are, are cited for violations. We're adjudicating that in a convenient way for them. You know, we have, you know, arbitrators that are, you know, you know, it's, it's an impartial arbitrator that, that adjudicates those and, and the revenue keeps within the city and it's been... that adjudicates those, and the revenue keeps within the city, and it's been productive so far. And as far as the exact number, you know, carry our finance directors in here, I can pull up our latest figures, but it's been overall productive for the city, and we're keeping it for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Lempert. Ms. Williamson.
I believe the mayor's court, since its inception, has brought in about $2.8 million back to North Olmsted. That money would have gone into the Rocky River Municipal Court. North Olmsted would not have seen that much money, ever. So I think that the implementation of our mayor's court was a very good call in doing, as my colleagues had said, the profits from the mayor's court go back into the city. Back into the funds. So, thank you.
Thank you. Going to give the candidates just a moment to get their closing remarks ready. And I would like to just give you a little extra information on the city council. It is a legislative branch of government.
It is in the form of ordinances and resolutions. Those are introduced to city council, they're reviewed by committee, and then they're voted upon. The council is composed of a separately elected president of council, four ward council members, and three members at large. There are four candidates for the three members at large on the November 5th ballot. The election of ward and members at large are staggered to allow for continuity. A primary function of the city council is to be the financial watchdog of the city, as city council is charged with the duty of appropriating funds. The city council meets at 8:00 PM in the city council chambers in City Hall on the first and third Tuesday of each month, with few exceptions. The candidates were advised the way in which we will have our closing statements. Once again, they are for two minutes. And we will begin with Mr. Dwayne Lempert.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. You know, this has been, I think, a very healthy, I don't want to call the debate, because it almost felt more like a panel with just three incumbents here. But I think we all expressed maybe a nuance, how we're all different, and how we view things differently within the city. So I thought that was productive. As I said, I've been on council for six years now. I feel like I've contributed positively to each ordinance and resolution that comes up to think about it from not only what are we spending it on, but what else could we be spending on, and what's the cost of owning, you know, that expense or that asset. So that's the way I approach things. It's, I find it that it's productive for council. I listen to the residents. Being at large, you know, you get a lot of different perspectives from a lot of different parts of the city, and it allows you to kind of understand what is this resident feeling and what's their situation versus others. You know, I've lived in all four wards of the city, so I'm very familiar with how each ward and even each development is slightly different. And I think I bring that value to the table here in North Olmsted, and I've enjoyed it serving you for six years, and hope that I can serve you for another four years. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kearney, please.
I have only lived in one ward. My bad. But I stand by, on my record, as being a councilman for the last 12 years, I believe our main concern, our main role as a councilperson is to be a good watchdog for our neighbors' tax dollars being spent. And I believe the money that I talked about, 2008, the deficit, the operating deficit was at over $800,000, and now our operating surplus is $399,000. Our bond deficit in 2008 was $52 million, or $51.2 million, and today it's just over $21 million. And I believe that that is one of the most things I'm proud of, just working with the administration, the finance director, and the mayor, and all the directors, and trying to, just trying to do the best for our residents. And that's what I try to do. In closing, I will simply say that it's been my pleasure to serve on council, and I hope that I get your vote to do it one more time. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this platform. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you. At the end of the day, we are all taxpayers on this panel. We are all residents. We are all part of this community. I think that we, as a group, and we as individuals, have shown our strengths. We have maintained a terrific budget. We've been great watchdogs over all the things that have gone on. We've all made great decisions. We've all agreed to disagree on a number of issues. But at the end of the day, it's to better our community and to make our city great for those that we serve. If reelected, I would like to continue to work toward maintaining our budget, working toward bettering services in our community, and watching to make sure that our taxes go down rather than go up. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Well, we're not quite done, but we would like to wish the three candidates here this evening our very best, as well as Mr. Kelly, who's unable to join us. These are already candidates who are serving the community, and we appreciate the value that they bring to the city of North Olmsted, I'm certain. I would like to ask that you join me in applauding them for being here this evening and for putting themselves out into the community by serving the citizens of North Olmsted. And we just have some final remarks by our chair of the Westlake North Olmsted Chapter of League of Women Voters, Ms. Janice Patterson. Thank you.
We got to say that. We received two questions that are logistical questions, not questions for candidates. And when I have an audience like this, I think it's only fair that you hear the answers. I would remind you that municipal and school board elections in North Olmsted are nonpartisan. So while candidates can always have party affiliations, it's not appropriate to deal with that in a nonpartisan forum of this nature. But it's certainly a question that individuals can ask individual candidates. The other question had to do with why the absent candidate got a longer opening statement. This is a matter that we, as the league, believe that you should get as much information as you possibly can about a candidate, and we thought perhaps them sending their own introduction would do some of that. Realize that they, that that candidate did not get any closing statement, nor did he get any opportunity with the back and forth with our audience and their questions. So it's something we can think about for future events like this. But I think that we believe that in an open forum like this, that's supported as we are doing with a video of this that can be available to all citizens after this event, we're doing what we can to give you as much voter information as we hope you can use. We have an additional league resource for voter information, and that's our vote411.org. Not all candidates respond to that. We make every effort to get every candidate to respond to questions that have been tailored for our communities wherever we have league candidates. So that's another place, and that vote411.org has candidates at all levels of government that you're going to be voting on in the November election. So it's a good resource. It's a national league project that's going to be here for a long time, so we'd like you to get used to using that online resource, too. Thank you.[1714.86][1714.86][music]